This time we called meeting order. Anyone here to offer an invocation?
Father God in heaven, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this weather, God. We just thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, who died for our sins. And I pray tonight for confidence. I pray for you to govern this body of people that are going to make decisions on our city and our community. I pray for kindness and love. In Jesus' name we pray.
This time, do you want to say, let's go, go on in, say the pledge of allegiance together? If y'all want to stay standing, we'll say the pledge of allegiance together when everybody gets in here. Is that all right?
Boys and girls, remember, it's a really important meeting. Back to behavior. Getting ready to say the pledge of allegiance. I need your hand on your hearts.
This time we'll say the pledge of allegiance. This time, I would add any changes to the agenda.
Very good. We did have three changes to the agenda. We're adding two action items. One is related to a request from Dalton Dirt Works for additional funds. It's a change order. Another, we'll be adding an executive such for confidence in this data. And we need to add an ordinance for street level for special events.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the agenda as invented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to proclamations, recognitions, presentations, and items scheduled at a certain time. First is the Constitutional Week proclamation.
Constitutional Week is the commemoration of America's most important document. President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed Public Law 1956 to set aside September 17th through the 23rd annually for the observance of Constitution Week. My name, Mary Toman, I'm a member of the local chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. I'd like to thank the mayor and fellow city commissioners for setting time to celebrate this sacred document.
So the proclamation for Constitution Week. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17th, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore I, Charles Lambert, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Concordia, and as to hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals, the framework of the Constitution, patented 1787, by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Concordia be affixed this 20th day of September of the year of our Lord 2023.
This time, we leave the fourth grade. We'll have a presentation.
Okay, two class. I think you all have to stay for the whole meeting. Hey, what do you guys tell it? Thank you all very much for being here. Moving on to the Recovery Month proclamation.
Hey, Russ. I'm on the Ponte Mental Health Board. I'm bringing this proclamation to the mayor's side. I did read it. It was interesting to see there was 21 million Americans had lost, had at least one eviction, only 10% of them. I did this proclamation, or if they are in recovery and they do get treatment. May I answer any questions if you want? See if I can get the mayor to at least read the last paragraph.
I'd be happy to read it all for you, Ron. Recovery Month proclamation, recovery is for everyone, every person, every family, every community. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and overall wellness and prevention works, treatment is effective, and people tend to recover from substance use and mental disorders. And whereas it is critical to educate our policymakers, friends, and family members, healthcare providers, and businesses, that substance use and mental disorders are treatable, and that people should seek assistance for these conditions with the same urgency as they would other health conditions. And whereas almost 21 million Americans have at least one addiction, yet only 10% of them receive treatment, and drug overdose deaths have more than tripled since 1990. And whereas social support is crucial and social isolation is a risk factor for relapse and physical distancing measures. And quarantine may be especially difficult for people in recovery because they limit access to meetings of peer support groups and other sources of social connection. And whereas the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, and Ponte Mental Health Services observe Recovery Month to raise awareness and understanding of recovery from substance use and mental disorders. And therefore, the city of Concordia, Kansas, does hereby proclaim September 2023 as Recovery Month. And Concordia calls upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recognize the importance of recovery and to commit our community to increasing awareness and accepting awareness and understanding of substance and use of mental disorders and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people. Okay, moving on to public comments. This is the time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We request that you state your name and address, speak respectfully, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Russell Ganyan, private citizen, order like less than three minutes, Justin.
I'm timing you.
On Saturday, Brad Lowell was laid to rest, and he was publisher of the Blade Empire newspaper. And this town meant a lot to him, and he was especially proud of the way it governed itself. So I just wanted to say a few words here. One of Brad's favorite quotes was, "If a small town loses its newspaper, it loses part of its identity." The Blade Empire has been putting out a newspaper in Concordia for 121 years. And these are tough times for newspapers. For the last 45 years, Brad and a dedicated staff have carried the torch, have always made sure that this town never lost that part of its identity. And he was proud of that. Now, Brad had his opinions, and he'd be the first to tell you that he was no saint, but he did care deeply. His dedication to the newspaper ideal, his devotion to this community, and his kindness and his compassion, not just for his employees, but for so many other people's lives that he touched, will always mark him as a good man and maybe even a better human being. And in the end, that means a lot. We're very proud of him. Thank you.
Any other fellow comments? Moving on to the action agenda, the minutes of the September 6th, 2023 meeting. The move by Commissioner Bellin, and second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the minutes of the September 6th, 2023 meeting. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to appropriation ordinance number 17. Questions or concern?
There was a weather station generator inside of the community. The generator was part of that DOJ grant that we got for a place, a generator there near the, what's called the former weather station building where RMA engineering is found. I move to approve appropriation ordinance number 17.
So the move by Commissioner Hutchinson, and the second by Commissioner Bellin to approve appropriation ordinance 17. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to the wastewater treatment plant phase two supplemental agreement with PEC.
Very good. We have Sarah and Matt here from PEC, and Gerald's on online, I guess. Is that right? Okay. They're here to request additional funds for additional inspection fees incurred as part of the lengthy wastewater treatment plant phase two. So Sarah, Matt, and Matt, if you guys come over to the podium then.
Thank you. Thank you, Ramon. I'm Matt Howe, VP of our inspection group, the PEC, and come tonight to ask for your approval on our supplemental agreement number three, where we're requesting additional funds for our inspection overages of $45,000. Our original fee that we presented was based on 279 calendar day duration for the contractor and contractor work. And through March 11th of 2023, that's the week that we had, at least the last week that we had substantial onsite inspection services for the project. So the calendar days that I took through that day right there was 357. So there was an additional 108 calendar days that provided, that was just calendar days, but the weeks through that, we provided full-time inspection services on the project. Want to honor our commitment and agreement for those full-time inspection services. And to make sure that, to help with this project, that you guys give the best, the best project that you could. Or the city infrastructure is a critical project. And so we are here tonight just to request a portion of our overages, of our inspection overages. That 45,000 equates to approximately about six, six weeks worth of it. And we, there was a lot more additional inspection services that we provided on that. But that's just a quick overview, and if you guys have any questions, I'll be glad to answer any questions that anyone may have.
So the 108 days was calendar days, not working days?
The 108 was calendar days, and that was from the over, the contractor went over on their work, or it was extended from the 279 calendar days that was originally contracted. And just for the supporting packet, that our supporting documentation, I went through all the just the days that were, for the contractor was working, that was suggested that we were going to be onsite, the days that weren't included on that, on that suggestion. And then the weeks, I went back through today, and there was actually 34 extra days that needed an onsite, full-time onsite inspection that contractor activities would have, would have warranted that full-time inspection. But that's 34 working days that we were actually onsite. And that was just for the timeframe that was listed, that was included in that supporting package too. And so that would almost equate to seven weeks of full-time inspection, just in that part alone. There is a, there is a quite a bit of additional inspection time that was spent outside of those weeks that were noted in that package, and then also some closeout activities and, and outline drawings that is pretty typical at the end of a project too, that's not included in that very board.
So at this point, are you complete, or do you have all the final paperwork? Where are we at on?
As far as our inspection services, yes, we are. There won't be any more inspection for this project onsite or any fees or hours charged to the project at all. As far as the overall project, I'll.
Yes, it is all. So the last piece that we, I'm sorry, Sarah entered. And the last piece that we do to close out the contract is prepare those record drawings, which is basically a, here's what we started with when we bid this project. Here's how it ended up through constructions that the city has a whole set of actually what was fully done. And so we've already completed those, so there is no, no more work left on the job.
With, with other projects that were going along in a similar timeframe in other communities, did you anticipate or, or experience similar challenges with scheduling and overages?
So typically, the projects that we're on inspection with, if there's going to be overages on time, the contractor is going to be extended past the original contract time. A lot of times, they will be change orders going back requesting for additional time. And we set our fee up based on the original contract time, just because it keeps it streamlined and simple. So additional contract time that's requested for the project. We also request that additional time for to base our fee up of, just because to provide the inspection services, and that's what we, that's what we have to do. So, yes, we have had, there's been a lot of projects in other communities that go over contract time, and it's all for various reasons. There are all different reasons. Some is within the contractor's control, some is not within the contractor's control. So usually the, the things that are within the contractor's control is when they go back and ask for additional time. Change orders are presented, and then we try to present the same time to increase our, our time of services as well.
So there was a change order, to Matt's point, that was an issue that extended the contractor's days due to something beyond their control. And so these number of days that Matt's talking about are outside of that. So we did, the contractor started with this, we ended up with this, and we actually went this much farther based on their actual book schedule. I know at one point, there was just, it was a stop work on the project. So did you stop billing during that portion of time? Correct. There was no one onsite at that time. Our folks were not onsite. The contractor was not there.
And those calendar days that I gave, that takes into account that stop work order where we didn't include that time.
So, did your, did your fees go up in 2023, like dividing the 279 by the, or I'm sorry, the total by the 279 versus the additional amount with the 106 days, it seemed like the, like if per day, if you were doing calendar days, it seemed like the amount was different than the original bid.
Well, keep in mind too, there's there's additional inspection time that we had on this project that we're not requesting beyond too. I don't, we did not change our bill rates at all.
No, we did not. So typically, you know, our billing rates will adjust every year, but if we start a project, we don't change them during the course of that. So we know that these longer projects will go over, you know, two, three, four years. Sometimes we don't change our or adjust our hourly rates during that timeframe. We stick with whatever was done when the contract was signed. So, we didn't adjust the rates at all, I guess, I think.
So why do you start calendar days and not working days?
We can set it up when we do an initial contract. We can do it either way. We typically will do calendar days just because it's an easier timeframe to account for. Working days, you get into accounting for holidays and, you know, various other things that can shift based on the, you know, when you start a contract versus when you end it. You know, we put out design documents, and we might start it on this date, but the number of calendar days would be different if we started here versus here because of holidays and things like that. So we usually do it over a total calendar day. Now, when we do that, we're taking into account the actual time the contractor, we would expect them to be onsite. So that's included in that, but we typically just do calendar days because it's easier.
I'm, I might be like, just being a business owner and, and the difficulties of bidding versus estimating and committing to that, like, I can understand the lost time and lost hours, and that can be difficult. And I've received the, the bad end of that at times. This project was a project that hadn't been done around here anymore, or ever, you know, it was like a, a first time for everybody. So when you enter into something like that, there's typically going to be some pickups or some bumps in the road. I think that typically, I wouldn't say that people would bid it to absorb some of that. Like you said, you do calendar days versus like actual working days, and you can probably work on other projects at the same time, which is wonderful. But, um, I guess that being said, might be unpopular, but I, I feel like to honor, like you guys being willing to fully complete the the job and make sure that it's done right versus, you know, just bringing up our jail situation and how horrible that situation was. Not having, that, you know, like whomever was in charge, and I don't know all the ins and outs of it, but just the integrity to make sure that everything was done right. I, I would feel comfortable with, like splitting half of the overage, which is based at the 77, 529, 94. If we have it in the budget, which would be $38,764.97. I don't know if that's unpopular. Please feel free, but, and maybe other people are of a different opinion than me. But if it's, I, I mean, like, obviously, we didn't budget for it. It's not a line item. We didn't plan for it at all. So that might not be a popular opinion.
And that also, I mean, I, I broke it down to days, and if you just did 30, if we just did, based it on 30 working days, it's $31,660.50. So that's based on like, based on the 279 calendar days, that was $1,055.35. So, like, that's, you know, that's actually more than 30 working days based on the 279. And you have 34, like, actually working days in there. So that 38,000, I feel like is, is fair. But feel free, other commissioners, to give your, your piece. I appreciate you couldn't pin the paper on that. I would tend to agree. I think, you know, there's probably a little bit of frustration. I know I have some frustration with this project, but I think it's shared frustration between you know, everyone involved. And so I do appreciate you finishing up the work and making sure that we are up to code, and it's a, it's a very important project. And I would agree with that assessment to do that 38, 38, 764, 97.
And please feel free to check my math, too.
And I do want, I would like to comment. I appreciate, yeah, everything. That 34 extra days that I counted for, that was, that wasn't the days that we were, that wasn't the total number of days that we were on site. That was just the number of days that wasn't noted in the contractor's recommendation for PEC or contractor, where we needed to be out there on top of what we did for the contractors, which was still over the, the original completion date on there. So I just want to, I just want to make sure that that was known, that that 34 working days wasn't just the additional days that we were on site. That was just the days that wasn't noted for us to be out there, that the contractor's original email requesting for our inspection, the days that would be out there.
So you're out there more than 34.
We were out there a lot. We were out there a lot.
I, I think in in reading through it and going back and forth in the emails. I I think we we have a positive working relationship with P E C and I think that it's important to have good working relationship with good contractors, good. Consultants, um knowing how much time was out there, knowing that there was some conversation and maybe even some some disagreement about what warranted part-time. Inspection, what warranted full-time inspection, the length of the project, the overages in time and and all that being considered. I I mean, I I think at some point, looking at the scale of the project, the the difference between thirty-eight and forty-five is. It's certainly, it's it's something, but in the scale of the the whole project and and the overage that. Supervision time, I would, I would be comfortable with the compromise of coming from seventy-seven to forty-five. I feel like that's not, not an unreasonable ask. What I would, what I would wanted, the conversations I would wanna have is what what do we do and what can we do moving forward? Uh I hope to goodness that a complete remodel of a wastewater treatment plant is not in my near political future. Um so, so perhaps not on this project, but on other projects, what can we do just to to save ourselves from having this conversation? And I think that that's maybe not something that needs to be uh decided tonight, but I'd like the opportunity to figure out what we can do to just. And 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 I think not to, not to forget that the timeline when all this was taking place, the time when. There were a lot of challenges that we were all experiencing across the board. So I think with the overages, I think forty-five is not, not completely unreasonable, and we're pretty close there with thirty-eight.
Like you, I think we need to keep our. Working relationship with P E C. They've done a good job. Added, you know, they weren't planning on these extra days either, so that. Scheduling and that type of thing is a mess. I I don't have a problem with forty-five.
Are you happy with the product you have, Jeremy?
Yes, it's everything is working.
Tires are staying inflated, I mean, cages are working and.
We're making cake. You're making dirt. I have a video if you wanna see it.
I'm fortunate that I'm not quite that poor, Jeremy, but I won't keep that in mind.
Seventeen seconds long.
I would like to see it.
I could be fascinated. I I think it's, I think it's a.
So they started, and you know, anyone that started this type of a project in Kansas now that we.
We know you, you're the first one to have this meeting.
So really, you should be paying us for the opportunity to. Really help you out.
I know it was our project, but did you guys, um and maybe it's not even the thing, and maybe Amy can correct me. Business owner that does business and stuff, but um since it was maybe a little bit of everybody's fault that it kinda went over, didn't go as planned or whatever. Um did you ask the general contractor personally, personally as well, or just that?
We talked about that as well. Um I don't know if Amy, you wanna talk about that at all, or if we just wanna say, yes, we did have those conversations, that's kinda where we ended up. They they did absorb some cost as well, they did.
Could, is that um, or is it okay to know what they absorbed? Like what amount do you?
I don't know if I have it.
Or just an estimate?
Probably similar, I would imagine, um at least. Yeah, that they could figure that I had this right around seventy, and we're hard to face some negotiation on, on whether we have to keep other costs down.
And then we had um a hundred thousand in contingency built into the contract with the contractor. And that was also fully used, which that's what we considered as the city's absorption. And it was used on unforeseen things, um as well as things that that we worked to negotiate as far as. Things that went well that we thought might have been taken care of earlier.
I remember with the total cost of the project, Chris.
Just phase one or both, or just phase two or both of them together, was it? It's six.
In my mind, phase one was something like two and phase two was like four.
Yeah.
I mean, very, very ballpark, very ballpark pictures. And then, so in my mind, when we're talking about overages of a hundred within the contingency plus forty-five, when we look at the percentage of that of the overall project. And and I believe it, what we. What does approve or bond add and what it was, what it was bid, I was, I mean, it came in under budget.
The bond, the bond rate, I remember we ended up like one point six seven or something, we thought, which is amazing.
So.
The wastewater treatment plant, which is the money that. The the bonds, the the project bid came in under what we bonded, because we bonded right before we did. It's that there is, there is room in there.
It's not the reserves, it's, I mean, there's, there's a product to draw from.
And I think it's, I think it's seven years before we can refinance it. And so that extra funding is just sitting there, we can't do anything with it, we can't use it to pay down on anything, we have to just leave it there for that for seven years.
I might entertain a motion one way or the other.
Like you said, I mean, a few thousand dollars, it seems like not much in the grand scheme of things, but it's still, you know. When we're, and I, yeah, that's in the fun. I I liked the idea of the thirty-eight too, just because it's just. Splitting, it's just splitting it directly in half the overage. Um and that's taking, you know, like taking our part of it and then understanding that that's. So that you guys are absorbing a lot of it too, because I I think I figured out the amount that you asked for was forty percent essentially, so they absorbed forty percent. So you still are at a loss of twenty. The way you said, a few thousand dollars in the grand scheme of things, that's taxpayer money, so we wanna be thoughtful about it as well.
I look at it as they could be asking actually for more, because they actually work for it.
I think we have two opportunities for a motion, either from Commissioner Wentz or from Commissioner Jackson. Of being an opinion.
I would move to approve the wastewater treatment plant, I used to, it's about a million, very much, P E C. And authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
So move by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Belton to approve the wastewater treatment plant phase two supplemental agreement with P E C. And authorize the city manager to sign the agreement. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here and being able to answer our questions. Moving on with ordinance twenty twenty-three thirty-two eleven, the street closer for special event.
Hey, Dan, I'm here representing the class of seventy-three, the EZG, and we're requesting that. Broadway be closed between six and seven, from the alley to Sixth Street. Uh for September twenty-third, the Fall Fest, and then alcohol be allowed in there till midnight.
So how are you gonna police it?
Police. I mean, really, we don't have people running around policing it, but I think every year there's been one there, I think the police walk around and keep order. I mean, we'll do our job, we'll make sure nothing, we'll make sure nothing happens, of course, but.
So I have two guys assigned to that area for the duration of the, they get together. That's all they're assigned to is that area.
And and I know that the year where this became problematic, there was an altercation. Um and and since that time, I think there's been concern and reservation of the potential for that happening again. Um another week, we find ourselves here, actually, the week before Fall Fest. Uh doing this and and since then, we've been able to make it happen and it's it's been a. A positive event for the community. Uh I I feel even more. Uh confident with law enforcement present this year than I have in years past. I've never been skeptical or or doubtful of it, but just that much more confident. With with a lot of the work that she's gearing to do, and so I I feel fairly uh confident that we'll be able to manage it. And hopefully address issues before they come out of hand and and uh.
I'd like to consider a possible amendment. Um are we, well, is this, is this going to be starting saying like eleven o'clock? Oh, it's from two P M?
Two to midnight, yeah.
Two to midnight, okay, and but the tournament doesn't start till four?
Right.
Okay, why did, why the extra two hours just to? That's what it is.
I think just for your preparation, Chris and I run the cornhole every year.
Okay.
Seems like it gets bigger every year and I, you know, I don't know if they. Will take two or three or whatever you give us, I guess.
We short, yeah, we shortened it last year, I think they tried from like eleven on, just because we didn't want. Lots of extra hours, because I think that's what led to the issue in years past, but two o'clock seems fine.
Are the guys gonna be there the whole time, like from your, your guides?
Yeah, I had them coming out at five, but I I can pump them if if we think that we need extra enforcement.
Usually with the tournament, the tournament starts at four, you start setting work up at three-thirty-ish. And then really nobody's there for that, for them. I think he he was teetering on the three or four o'clock start, discovering three years ago, they started at five and then. Had run pretty late, they approved that year.
I think when you find out you have more teams, you might have started up earlier. I don't know how many is gonna sign up, but they say it's been getting bigger all the time, so.
Well, and Tom, I appreciate you getting the fan this year, I think that'll be a nice.
Oh, yeah, you're welcome. We thought it was a good idea to try and, we're worried about rain, but looks like it's really. Only fifteen percent now, a couple of days ago it was like fifty, or it's kinda sweating there.
It's Kansas, it's always fifty percent.
Well, with that, I moved up for ordinance twenty twenty-three thirty-two eleven.
Uh the move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Belton, have to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three thirty-two eleven. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion passed. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
The dump truck purchase.
Mayor and Commissioners, as you recall, I sent out a bid for a dump truck back in June. I didn't receive any bids and I think that it was due to lack of trucks available. Uh I did some searching and ended up finding a company out of Wichita that has trucks available to build our specs. Um it's Master Tech Truck and Equipment. I worked with the guy and he met or exceeded everyone with our specs. And um. Ended up building us a, or quoting us a twenty twenty-four F seven fifty with a whole new dump bed and everything on it. Recommended action would be for the purchase of the twenty twenty-four F seven fifty from Master Tech. Truck and Equipment for the amount of one hundred fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars to be paid from that equipment reserve.
Or do you know anybody that that uh need any familiarity with this company or work that they've done?
I know the county uses that.
Okay.
Yeah, so they, they basically take the truck and build it exactly how you want it, so. And my plan for, once I get our old ones sold, is I don't wanna put the old um snowplow and frame, push brain on it. Once I get the old ones sold, I wanna use that money to try, to try to buy a new plow and all that, so the whole truck and the whole setup and everything will be. Brand new.
Does your old truck diesel or gas?
The one that we will be replacing is gasoline, that's the only one that we have that's gas.
Why? Are are you replacing it with a gas?
No, no.
Okay, so the new one is diesel?
The new one's diesel, yes.
Okay.
And that was another one of the reasons is like using the gasoline engine, like snowplowing and whatnot, um it. Goes through gas so fast compared to like our diesel trucks.
Diesel, I I researched this, I don't know a lot about trucks, but horsepower does not matter when it comes to dump trucks, it's torque. And you're gonna have a way better powder that lasts twice as long if you get a diesel versus gas. Because torque matters when you're hauling and pushing, so debris, concrete, or rock. And it actually is a a fair price for a dump truck.
Move to approve the purchase of the twenty twenty-four F seven fifty from Master Tech Truck and Equipment for one hundred two thousand, eight hundred twenty-three dollars.
Move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the purchase of two thousand twenty-four F seven fifty from Master Tech Truck and Equipment. For one hundred fifty-two thousand, eight hundred twenty-three dollars. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign.
I'm sorry, I do have one question. I mean, I have proven and all that, but we'll have our logo and all that put on it, correct?
Yes, that'll, that'll be put on the side. The only difference between this new one and the old ones is the old ones were a blue color. And I think I'm gonna try to get away from that, because once they sit in the sun and they fade out and all the different companies have different blues and whatnot. The white, I think it's hard, it's hard not to match, basically, so once I start phasing all these out, I'm just gonna go to white. And I think they'll stay cleaner, look cleaner a lot longer than the ones we have right now.
So blue truck with the white decal?
This one will be a white one with probably, probably the same thing we had on the rest of our city trucks. Same exact.
White, white with, white with blue decal, so we're done.
Yeah.
So, how soon will we be able to, they be able to get it to you?
Um when I talked to him, he was saying somewhere around six to eight weeks.
That's almost like immediate. Like almost immediate for purchase thing, eighteen months out or.
Right, I think he has the truck right now, so he just has to put all pieces together, basically.
What issues were you having with the other truck? I I should have asked that before, but it is ten years old too, but dump trucks last a long.
I know last year we were plowing and it just completely quit on us and it ended up being. Some kind of computer and sensor that just like turned it off and uh took us a while to figure it out and. On top of that, I told you the gas mileage and whatnot and. I'm hearing right now that maybe once you get it running, that it, it'll stay running, but if you turn it off or turn it back on, it'll all start.
Yeah, I think all opposed, same sign, motion passes. No, not all, it's better to ask questions with the board than after.
You're good at questions, I'm a fan of questions.
Uh moving on to the demo bid for three fifteen West Third Street.
Mayor Commissioners, as you know, this was part of a property we condemned on July fifth with some others. And uh the owner asked for thirty days to make a decision. During that thirty days, I got several phone calls and I actually. Met a lady who purchased it and I probably would have had this to you before the thirty days had passed and. Had to do some research with the city attorney and state laws, and we decided we can just keep moving forward, so. Uh the new owner is aware of that and so we traded out for bid and we're gonna receive one bid. So we traded out for bid and we're going to receive one bid. We accept that bid and all your work for seven hundred dollars.
I'm going to accept a little bit of fifty-seven hundred dollars from Dalton Dirt Works for the demolition of the structure at three fifteen West Third Street. Second.
So by Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Hutchinson to accept a little bit of fifty-seven hundred. From Dalton Dirt Works for the demolition of the structure at three fifteen West Third Street. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to the demo program application for five oh four East Tenth Street.
As you know, this is also a property we can have that same day. Uh, Everett fourth came in, he's the owner and he asked for an extra time for the for two of these properties. Uh, September thirteenth was the deadline to have application in place and he got them in place. I I encouraged him to continue to try to get other bids. We we always required two bids and I don't know what the reason is, but. The last few demo projects we put out there, the bid, we're only, you know, we got two on one and the last three just one, so. We're going. And if it's, if another bid came in, it would have to come in lower than eight thousand dollars for us to save any money. And Everett's okay with this. He just wanted to get it going and so I recommended accept that.
Compared to the last one, it's substantially higher. Uh, I don't know the difference in structure. Do you think it's because of the hill it's on?
It it's a few reasons. The one on Third Street is half gone because it burned and it has no foundation. It's got two rows of. Limestone and a hole is deep.
Okay.
So it's very easy to fill, not much hauling dirt to backfill, not much hauling foundation material on. And also the, also there's no trees and the owners have been in there. Picking it apart. They've got the fence removed. They've got all the leaves beat down, so you won't have to go in there and bush hog it and uh, they're they're stripping it and. But the one Dalton told him just himself, the one on the hill is full of trees and it's very steep. And it's hard to stage and work. He's gonna have to work the top ones from on top and the bottom. So he's gonna have to. He's got, I think it's Court Street on top, the one behind there, and then and there's two sheds back there and it's full of trees. Now Everett has been in there doing some work himself. He's cut some trees down and kind of cleared them off to the side. And taken some material, but uh, and that one also has a basement, a lot more uh, foundation material. So that's, that's part of the reason.
Thank you.
That fifty-seven hundred surprised me. It it's hard to get them that low anymore, but when they don't have a even a fall space under it. That really makes a lot of difference because it cuts down their uh trips for hauling dirt in and. And their trips for hauling foundation material, clear out the country somewhere.
So if our maximum reimbursement is four thousand, why are we? paying the extra on this?
I'm sorry, uh.
Well, in our, in the demo program, the maximum.
Reimbursement.
Reimbursement is four thousand.
Right.
On this.
Is there something wrong on that?
Well, no. It said that fifty percent. I bet it's five thousand three.
I know, but I wrote on there that that if you go on our maximum, so the maximum they'll get is four thousand. The reason I put that on there is because try to help understand that if we did wait or tamed this until he got another bid, we'd have to get a bid under eight thousand dollars. For us to save any money if we.
Oh, okay.
And he's okay with the ten thousand dollar bid on Dalton's, uh Everett is, so.
Okay.
So he would charge it six thousand seven twenty.
And I assume that if he wasn't, he's really been trying to get another bid and and we don't require still bids. So he could have taken that bid to another contractor and said.
Yeah, okay.
And which happens. People like sort of contractors and they'll do that. And that's why it's a reimbursement program because the owner is responsible for those transactions between contractor and off the city.
I move to accept five oh four East Tenth Street into the demo program and authorize the city manager to sign the contract with the owner based. On the bid at ten thousand seven hundred twenty dollars from Dalton Dirt Works.
So move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Beldon to approve uh to accept five oh four East Tenth Street into the demo program and authorize city manager to sign the contract with the owner. Based on the bid of ten thousand seven hundred twenty dollars from Dalton Dirt Works. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none on my favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to requests from Dalton Dirt Works for additional funds.
Dalton's requesting twenty-seven hundred dollars for three demos that he bid and one that bids on. For the houses we condemned. After we issued. The demo permit for one oh three Valley, he moved in there. We discovered that we had mistaken the publication dates. And how they were publicized on our website. So we, so I stopped him and said, we gotta get this worked out. And then he decided, well, can. We went ahead and figured out that if we could do one nineteen or or two two eighteen West First, so he moved his material equipment down there. And then the next day after talking to city attorney. We realized that he, that we were okay. And. We got a call from the owner of two eighteen or the brother of the owner of two eighteen West First and he wanted time to get some of these mothers some material. Stuff out of there. So I asked Dalton, could you, you know, wait on that or start on the garages first or something? And then we were okay to do one over three valleys. So he moved back up there. So anyway, as a result of that, it's kind of our fault. He's requesting another twenty-seven hundred dollars for extra utilization.
And these are part of the demo program?
No, these are condemned properties. Yes, and this all comes, we have, we have money and. And our C R P is ready. That's what all the program comes out in any condition.
Yeah, I think that in all the time that we've been doing condemnation, demo programs, I think this is the first. Real time, I remember there being a, an issue like this. So hopefully we can identify the the challenges that led us to be here at this point. And reduce the likelihood of them happening again. I appreciate the difficulty in moving back and forth.
I don't recall with the previous. Amountless, but I think that even with the twenty-seven hundred dollars, it's still lower than the other bid that we had received. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's still below that.
Which had we went with that company, they were not local. So like that would have been a lot more of a burden for them.
They would have been coming from areas.
Yeah. Move to approve the request for a change order for an additional twenty-seven hundred for extra fees related to the demolition of three properties. Second.
Move back Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the request for a change order for an additional twenty-seven hundred. For extra fees related to the demolition of three properties. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none on my favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, ordinance twenty twenty-three thirty-two one-two imminent domain.
Um, so next step in the process here, uh regarding the imminent domain proceedings that we talked about. Is that we passed a resolution last meeting. That resolution basically outlined or. Directed uh us to get a uh legal description of the property and a survey. We obtained that. And then so the next part of this is for you guys to go ahead and pass the ordinance directing myself to. Uh, basically commence the publication of the imminent domain proceeding and then moving forward with it. So filing a petition. The uh gathering of uh three appraisers to appraise the property. And just how the process can begin from there. After that, we have a appraisal meeting. Um, they go and actually it's usually piggybacked or before. Uh, city council meeting, we do have a public meeting where they basically let everyone know what the amount is, who would want to uh attend. Uh, so what this ordinance does then is just we will publicize that. And then I will go ahead and get a petition filed and go through the procedural process of uh imminent domain for that property.
Still no movement from the county on share sale?
No, no. I checked it out. I also let them know that this was on their end. They were. Somewhere believed it was gonna be one less property to have to deal with. So I did let them know that this was to be received, so.
Great, thank you. When you published the information for this, is it only locally or?
Yeah, it's just, well, no, I take that back. If we, so the folks who own it. Uh, thankfully, there's only one. Previous eminent domain, we had to publicize some large newspapers in various places because there was different heirs. Uh, in regard to this, there's one owner uh who I've been able to locate now uh in Kansas City.
No, but it would look at a family member.
Locate a family member. Um, so in the event that we have to publicize for that, so we have to publicize here locally. And then if I cannot get them served, then I have to request uh permission from the court to publicize. So then we will publicize it in newspaper in Kansas City of general circulation. Probably wouldn't be the star because the Kansas City stars are godly expensive. So there's other local newspapers that we can frequently put it in.
Move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two twelve.
Move by Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three thirty-two twelve. Is there any further discussions? Hearing none on my favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to manager's report.
Mayor Commissioners, at your table is a copy of the public survey that is now live on the city's website. This is really the comprehensive plan. We want to get as much public input as possible on these questions. Uh, we are. Excusing my consultant sound, Bruno, we're working with P E C on this little finish. So this is, this is okay that we are working with P E C. It's a different group than the folks that were here today. They come up with the basic questions and then we had an opportunity to add to them or take away from them. One of the things that we did add to was under planning and investment priorities on the third page. And they had the basic questions and then we added some of the items that have been discussed pretty frequently uh within our community over the last couple of years. So as an example, code enforcement. Um, code enforcement and property maintenance has been a hot topic for us, as has housing. We did have the people haulers come and ask about an indoor court space and walking tracks. We put that in there. And then we did also have the school district for press partnership for funding improvements to public education facilities uh a couple of times over the last couple of years as well. So we did add those. This is basically asking for, maybe the input, public input regarding what they want to see the city invest in and where they want their priorities to go over the next ten to fifteen years. And then the consultant will assemble this data and bring it back into the meetings. Next Tuesday, we start the stakeholder meetings. There was different groups of folks that. Consultants wanted to meet with during the day. There'll be about four of those during the day. And then the planning commission and steering committee will need that night and get some results. Um, surveys about so far, uh especially with the stakeholders so far. And then the consultant will take that information back. Work it up and over the course of the next six months or so, they'll put together some additional. Uh, additional information for us and have some additional meetings with stakeholders. Ultimately, the update to the comprehensive plan will come back to the planning commission with recommendation to the city commission for approval as well. So. If you're given a hard copy of the the survey here, there is a Q R code and a link on the front page. Here that you can go and fill it out electronically. It takes about five minutes to go through, um opening and questions and uh multiple choice questions as well as some rank ordered questions. We did put the spire that such a camera that did go out and the water billing uh. Yesterday, the water bills went out or today, yesterday I believe it was. And then we'll also have some materials to promote at the Fall Fest booth that the police department is is staffing as well.
You have to be a city resident to um participate in the survey.
You don't have to be a city resident, but that is one of the questions. So um my anticipation is that the consultant is gonna take those survey results and some. Yeah, the if the if person fills it out that they're not a city resident, the consultant is gonna take that group of answers and set it off to the side. The reason that they put that in there. Is because some communities that do a comprehensive plan and update discuss what happens on the border fringe parts of the city so it's important for them to gather that information. Um, as well. Any questions on the conference update?
And then for older residents, um maybe we aren't comfortable with this, but so we are gonna have some hard copies of the survey available at the Fall Fest booth. And then we have them also available if I'm requested at City Hall.
Is it on our website?
It is, yes. If you go to the City Hall page, you scroll down to the news items, you can click there. You can also go through uh Bruno's Department of Planning and Zoning. And get to copies of plan update that way too. There's a lot more detailed information that reflects a lot of what was in the press release that went out along with some additional detailed information and a link to the survey.
And the press release included that information as well.
Yes, it did.
Okay, just a hard copy of the survey.
Yes.
So what if you own a business in Cali, live out in Cali? Out in California, your question.
Can't be on the planning commission.
Huh?
You can't be on the planning commission unless you live in town.
Yeah, well.
About the survey results, however, that's a good question.
Yeah, because we.
They still have the opportunity to fill it out. I mean.
Yeah, but I ask if you, the first question, you know, if you live in town.
Question, I don't think that's a good question.
Yeah, I'll I'll ask the consultant. We'll follow up with them. Of of input there. That's a big question.
I think that for business people that that have businesses in town and don't live in town. Their frustrated that they can't get on a final commission and report on.
We'll ask how we can gather their info as well. Other than that, staff's done a really good job preparing for the Fall Festival, letting them speak to their uh specific areas regarding what they're doing. And we did have some challenges with the class screen. It went down, I believe, last Saturday. They were able to get a slideshow that the college needed for their event. However, we're not able to get anything else up and that does impact the plan. Events this week that the high school has planned for for their assemblies. So um Deb's been working with Mr. Bender and they do have a way that they can uh host the bonfire on Thursday night. They can make that work. Our, the assembly is a little bit more challenging because they want to play a video, a PowerPoint that has embedded video in it like they have in the past and that's not not doable with the screen. Uh, Deb worked with Apple One Media to see if we could locate the part that was needed to be able to fix the issue. And it's about two weeks out. And so we've been working with District Bender on some alternate meetings. We've looked at everything from can we reserve a separate projector? Use a separate existing sound system still at the plaza? How do we cover it and create a white, white background? To what other venues might still be people downtown versus not. Um, trying to uh get ahold of Melissa with the Brown brand right now to see if we can use that as an option. Of course, she's out of town today and tomorrow. So that's become a little bit of a challenge, but we'll see if we can make it work. The other option the school has is to hold the assembly at the high school auditorium. And just run a parade through downtown. We know that our downtown retail merchants really like to have the people downtown and stay downtown. Um, so we want to try it automatically as possible. So we're still working through that and trying to make a decision here before noon tomorrow and that allows the school enough time to get information out.
So at this point, the the main obstacle that we, we have, we have an equipment difficulty that's not allowing. There to be embedded video to play in a presentation, but the presentation could be played outside of that.
No, we cannot put anything up on the screen other than a pre-time dilute PowerPoint. It's all we can put up at this point in time.
But so the school has that. But there's, they're, they have a PowerPoint presentation, but within that, there's a active video that's not able to be displayed and that's that's what's keeping it from happening.
And it can't be timed because the way that the video is embedded and how they set it up to play, it can't be on a pre-time dilute. They have to physically advance it and that's not working with the screen right now.
It's like a modification or elimination of the video and then it's planning a pre-time. It could be.
I think that, I think the video is very, very important to the candidates that it's showcasing and important to their parents. They really want to be able to showcase them.
Good.
My understanding. So we're working with them to try to find a way to say, say yes, let's have it downtown and continue. But changes may be happening in the next few hours.
Is is the sound system separate or directly to the screen?
The sound system is still functional. It's linked to the screen, but it's still functional as I understand it. I'm talking with them and making it. So um that gave an option. What we didn't know is if you use one computer. Could you plug in a separate projector and plug in the H D mic cable to the sound system? And tell the computer to send information to both outputs or not. That's what we couldn't figure out today. So that's why the suggestion was maybe going to completely separate items. That we know that the computer can handle. So that that was an option that was offered as well. So anyway, trying to work through many, many options to make it work. So we'll see, we'll see. That we know that the computer can handle, so that, that was an option that was offered as well. So anyway, tried to work through many, many options to make it work, so we'll see, see where it lands. That's gonna make it. Any questions that you guys have?
Staff reports.
I just. On the on, on conference, I planned uh, next Tuesday, you mentioned to me about the Tuesday we're having the stakeholder. Meetings all day and then that Tuesday night, planning commission, steering committee, PEC, so there'll be a whole day of comprehensive plan. So. Comprehensive plan is available online under administrative, under the community development. On our website, if you want to read it, when we have it visiting.
Since we were talking about Williams Bar or Sheevan Plant, I would like to invite. You guys out for a tour at some point in time. Sometime in October, first or second. Meeting. I'll, yeah, set up.
I was gonna ask if you'd have snacks, but it's not gonna be appropriate. You're gonna have cake.
That's what happens. I'm always the. The butt of the joke.
I didn't know what.
We were talking about this morning in the park ads and I've. They talked about coming out there. I'm not taking those clowns.
It'll be a fun entertaining tour.
Oh, that's a nice time to tour.
Not the, the heat of the summer? If you, if you check your calendars.
Tell us please, you know, just the hottest air.
Would it, would it work better for you guys on October fourth? Or October eighteen, which is better? Fourth would be ideal.
Now, on the. So like the fourth is.
During the day. Or typically where the way that tours we've done on like a um, four o'clock, it lasts about an hour to forty five minutes and then gives you time to get back here and get ready for the meeting. So if, if we said four o'clock, would that work for you guys?
Then four.
And I do have my tour guide back, so you have heard that. Tim Hatfield is back and, and also Tom Strager, so. What day did we decide?
October fourth, Wednesday, four o'clock, ten four.
A second quarter word. Procedurally, would we need to be here to be in a meeting and then go out there?
No, basically I'll take care of that through the publication saying that you guys will be at a meeting there at that location. It'll can, then we'll. Adjourn and then reconvene the meeting here. So probably once we start there, you'll have to call a meeting to order. We'll take the tour, then you'll adjourn.
So we've been working hard on getting ready for our homecoming and involved us. Working with streets and, and then Annie down at the. On the crates and stuff. Um, I would like to see, invite you guys Friday night at the football game. We're gonna be handing ice cream out or uh, cops and cones. Except we're gonna actually hand. Containers out. It's not gonna be a cone because we didn't want to have to scoop it all, but it's gonna be little containers of ice cream. Just for everybody to appreciate. But anyway, we're, we're all set for Ball Fest and ready to go.
Any other staff reports? Yes. Does someone entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session? Uh, Mayor Commissioner Collins, I'm sorry.
I appreciate all the extra work everybody does. Big deal. Lot of work.
And so much appreciation for that work.
Yeah.
I just wanna thank Chief Gary for helping us head in the other day. They're gonna close our, my business is right in front of Broadway Plaza, so. He popped in to let us know that they're closing the streets and at what time, so that's, except for on Friday, we have a bunch of closings and stuff. It was very appreciated. I got things figured out, so thank you.
Um, I guess it's with that heavy heart, I'd like to just recognize the EMS folks and Sheriff's Department for the terrible work they had to. Um, do over the weekend and uh, just really keep that family in mind. Um, and as we head into this busy weekend, hope that we have um. Uh, everybody keeps it safe and I appreciate how good downtown looks right now. I really appreciate that. And Chris, thank you for shortening the football games. Very much appreciated from this mall.
Uh, Virginia, I attended the NIMS Kansas Emergency Management Training for Senior Officials. And received certificates for that, for bidding. Um, it was actually a very good training and um, learned a lot about just kind of how the uh, protocols. Uh, work and it's very methodical and. These gentlemen over here have to attend those trainings in depth, much greater depth, so appreciate that especially, but. Um, just the behind the scenes stuff that happens is, I think, just good information. Probably the takeaway, I have one of the takeaways, um, is just how important uh, room control is in those situations. And then also, I think, um, just in line with what Ashley said, uh, taking. I guess just. Like the, the mental health awareness month and the addiction awareness, um, along with like just current events. I also learned um. In a conversation recently that um, it's also. Like just with the downtime, um, and the crops being as good with farmers that um, just, you know, just to look out for our farmers and our ag community and. Um, uh, say hi, pop in, listen, um, just, you know, be present. Community. And inviting people to come out and be social at the Fall Fest, even if you're not a social person, it's because it's good to be around people.
I think trying to. Incorporate all that. No one that I'm talking with in my office is having an easier time with things. There's a lot of stress and a lot of pressure uh, that people are experiencing all over at, at every stage of life. And I think with that, we can, and, and as natural, I think, there's really nobody in this room. Who isn't a problem solver to some degree at, at heart. We wouldn't be doing the work that we're doing if we weren't problem solvers. So sometimes I think we can be. Overly focused and overly consumed with the problems that we are working to address, uh, but then as we come into a weekend of Fall Fest. A celebration, I've, I've kind of said it lightheartedly, but Fall Fest, Fall Fest, so this is either a good or a bad thing. It's, it's one of the main reasons. That I'm in Concordia, um. My wife was born and raised here, but coming back. To Concordia for Fall Fest to visit her family, there was, there's a nostalgia, there's, there's a, there's a community here that was really attractive to me. Being from a larger community and so it's, it kind of is a time for us to sit back and reflect on all the work that we do and really how, how good of, of work that we're doing. Um, you know, I think sometimes we just get so bogged down in what we need to do better, what we can do differently and how we can keep improving it. And I think those are really important conversations to have. But even in my work with, with people with depression, part of, one of the greatest things that we can do when we're experiencing depression is to express gratitude, to realize how. How fortunate we are to have some of the things that we do that we, we sometimes. Gloss over because we're so, so focused on, on what's hurting or what we need to take care of, so. It, it's, it's a good weekend. It's one of my favorite weekends in Concordia and I hope that everyone is safe, making good decisions. Or at least not terrible decisions. And uh, keep our law enforcement EMS staff as unbusy as possible. So. At this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn into.
Move to the city commission recess into executive session to discuss confidential disestata or trade secrets of a business, KSA seventy five forty three nineteen V four with Amy Lang and Justice Farrell and tenants. And to reconvene in the city commission chamber at seven oh five.
Move back Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Beldon to recess into executive session for the aforementioned reasons. Do we reconvene in the city commission chamber at? Seven oh five? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
I mean, parking lot and put a bumper against my bumper and pushed me into the fence. And then in my bumper, I was pissed.
No action was taken at this time. I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Move back Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Beldon to adjourn the meeting. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passed, meeting adjourned.